And according to the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council, was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building. The township website electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers, indicating that this work session, regular meeting would take place in the municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Councilwoman Sheba Oden.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Let us take the next few moments of silence to each seek in our own way whatever sources of inspiration will grant us, the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. Amen.
Agendas are available by the clerk. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yeah.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Here.
Councilwoman Udine.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Item number five, commendations and proclamations. Deputy Mayor, you have a proclamation for Asian American Public Pacific Island Heritage Month?
Yes, Mayor. I'm just going to read it from here. Yes, I'm not presenting to anybody specific.
Okay.
Proclamation, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2023. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of residents from Asia, India, and the Pacific Islands. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have a rich heritage thousands of years old, and whereas the month of May was chosen to commemorate the first Japanese immigration to the United States in May 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the transcontinental railroad on May 10th, 1869, completed predominantly by Chinese immigrant workers. And whereas we acknowledge Asian American and Pacific Islanders who have lived and worked in Franklin Township for many years, contributing to Franklin Township's economy, culture, education, politics, arts, literature, science, and technological developments despite institutional, social, and systemic injustices designed to prevent and limit these achievements and contributions. And whereas the theme for the year is advancing leaders through opportunity, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month allows us to appreciate and celebrate the importance of inclusion and building a brighter future for all residents by recognizing the contributions and accomplishments of Asian American and Pacific Islanders. Now therefore, we, Ramon Barrison, Deputy Mayor, and Philip Kramer, Mayor of the Township of Franklin, on behalf of the Township Council, proclaim May 2023 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and encourage all residents to participate in activities in promotion of Asian American and Pacific Islander heritage. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we're going to change things up a little bit tonight by having a council discussion item before the public discussion, because we thought you may want to, the public may want to comment on what they see in the council discussion. So, item number six, council discussion item, healthcare clinic partnership, Township and BOE, Zoofall Health Presentation. So, we all have Dr. Ravalli and Fran Palm.
Hello, there we go.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fran Palm. I am the CEO of Zoofall Health Center. And the reason that I'm here is to talk a little bit about the wonderful collaboration that we are embarking on with the school district, with Dr. Ravalli, and also, we hope, with also the municipality. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for participating in this partnership. Just to give it a little bit of background, about, oh, I guess a year and a half ago, perhaps, looking for an opportunity to work with the school district to provide health services, we reached out to a variety of communities, but found a great partner in Franklin Township School District. The school had also, the district had also been looking for how to meet the health needs of the student population. And as a provider of health services, we were able to make this partnership. Zoofall Health received a small federal grant to begin setting up something, and we went down the path of looking to renovate space in one of the modular units behind one of the elementary schools. And shockingly, the cost for that renovation seemed crazy, and we've since looked at another plan for locating near the middle school where there is space. But my job here today is really to give you a little bit of background on Zoofall Health and our history, which I have given you some of the slides for your review. But Zoofall Health is a nonprofit organization that started in 1990. We were founded by Dr. Robert Zoofall, a retired physician, and his wife Kay, who didn't want to sit around in their retirement, but saw that there was a need in the community for lots of people who did not have access to healthcare, whether that be because they were uninsured or very low income with language barriers, with intellectual barriers, with any barrier that kept them from seeking healthcare. And so they started a small volunteer effort, began with some friends, and providing medical services. Many years later, we've grown into an organization that has operations in seven counties. We're providing medical, dental, behavioral health, and a lot of other supportive services so that we can be sure that people have equal access to healthcare. And with that in mind, we know that the school district is also, with the goal, of course, providing education, but what can get in the way of paying attention in school is illness, or issues that, vision, any manner of needs. Perhaps you haven't gotten your vaccinations, and so the school's not letting you in. So there's a real great partnership for us to be able to provide the healthcare services that are needed with the highest priority to the schoolchildren, although ultimately the goal is to provide service to their families as well, and their neighbors, anyone else who is in need of services. So, we do not deny service to anyone, mostly based on inability to pay is the main reason which keeps people from accessing services. We do accept insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, some private insurances, but typically about half of our patients are uninsured. We do try to help people access health insurance through the Affordable Care Act plans, or now the expanded Medicaid, so that they have access to the full array of services. But in the short term, we will not deny anyone if they can pay. We do offer services on a sliding scale basis, which means that we adjust fees according to the family's ability to pay. But ultimately, if someone has circumstances that won't even let them pay the most discounted fee, we'll work with them. We won't turn them away. So, most often, what we're hoping to achieve is, with partnership with the municipality, is building an actual health center that would be on the school grounds, so that we can be as accessible as possible for the children and their families, and then ultimately the community. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the organization, and of course, Dr. Ravalli's here as well, from the district's perspective.
So the council portion of the joint BOE council committee met on this, and we've heard the presentation before, and we're very excited about it. What are you asking for from council?
Well, in conversations with Mr. Vornlocker, my understanding is that there are some American Rescue Plan funds that might be available to support the actual building of the facility. And the location that the district has identified is off of the parking area of the Hamilton Middle School. So we have engaged an architect to draw the plans, and I think the location is ideal because it is close enough to the schools, but also independent, so that we don't have to have individuals going into any of the district buildings once it's built.
Can you describe the facility, like how many rooms?
The, right now, we're trying to squeeze as much in, but we're hoping to achieve four medical exam rooms, four dental exam rooms, and two that would be dedicated for vision services, and there'd be one office for behavioral health. I'm not sure if that's all going to fit, but we're trying.
And what's your target community?
Really, anyone who has trouble accessing healthcare. So as I mentioned, typically, lack of insurance, or lack of understanding of how healthcare works is sometimes a barrier. And about, you know, depending on the community that we're in, there are immigrant families who are unfamiliar. Low income is generally the main commonality among many of our patients, although we are open to anyone. We will see if it's convenient, and they'd like, we have excellent, we are among, we rank the top 10 in clinical quality in the nation, so we are very proud of our services. And I find that anyone who would find it convenient to receive services from us is welcome.
You pointed out sometimes the barrier to healthcare is people not understanding the system and what's available to them. Are you going to have a social worker?
We generally do, combined with our, most often with our behavioral health services, and also an outreach worker who helps people understand how they can connect. We also have insurance enrollment specialists who help people figure out whether or not they're eligible for any kind of insurance, and help them go through the enrollment process. So we have a whole variety of people. They might not all be located within the building, but they're part of our network of services and would be available to help here on a rotating basis, or by telephone or remote. It not, doesn't, after COVID, we've all learned how to do things without being physically present. However, you want to get your tooth fixed, you pretty much have to be here in person.
Other council have questions?
I had a couple of questions, Mayor.
Sure.
So what is the guarantee of the funding mechanism five, 10, 15 years out, after an investment that you're asking? I'm not sure still exactly what the cost in the investment you're asking, total investment, but whatever it is.
Sure.
And like, specific, is there specific, not just what's already happened, but is there some guarantee of funding? Is there an endowment for operational expenses? And I have a follow-up when you're.
Okay. So right now, we have a federal grant for operations. We are not in the physical building, but we are bringing our mobile services so that we could get started. Two times a week, we are Tuesdays and Thursdays, we are parked outside the Hamilton Middle School. And so that money right now pays for salaries, supplies, all the things that we need to provide the services. The vehicle is funded separately, so that's not part of the deal. We have applied for additional funding for expansion of services, although generally we also earn revenue from reimbursements. So for anyone who has Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance, we are earning the fee that is allowable. And then for anyone who is uninsured, fortunately, New Jersey does have a charity care pool that helps, it's not as attractive to us as someone who's insured, but it does have a payment for the uninsured as well, who were residents of New Jersey. So, part of the, or 100%, is that we have to be able to operate, to offer services, to have the revenue. So we have the base grant, which alone isn't enough, but providing services is critical. So, as soon as we have enough space, actually expanding our days and our hours is critical for us for having enough revenue to operate. But at the earlier meeting, I don't remember who asked the question, it was maybe one of you here today, we have opened, this will be our perhaps 13th location, we've never failed in any of those, and we have, you know, 30-plus, 35-years almost of experience. Also, once a site is opened, it's again benefiting from all of what the organization has to offer, and so even if we have one site that is struggling more than another, it's all part of the same pool, and I'm confident we'll have enough in reimbursements to be able to, with the supplemental base grant, to be able to sustain it for the long term.
In all those other examples, you didn't go back to the town, or any aspects of the municipality?
Whenever we have an opportunity.
Or school system, or?
No. This is the first time that we're working with a school district, but we don't anticipate there being any additional exchange of resources.
That's fine. And so quick, I liked everything you're saying, but free healthcare is what we're basically saying?
No.
Let me just, so as people from around, is it, if you did something like this, it's restricted to township residents? Can people from other towns or counties? How do you monitor that? How do you kind of reconcile, you have, you know, not like we have a big homeless problem, but wanting to do the mission you're talking about with the logistics and security and just volume, you know, and managing it?
Generally, in most of our sites that are open to the public, we wouldn't restrict if someone from a neighboring town wanted to come by. But our first outreach would be to, one, the district. When we feel that we are achieving the goals we need with the district, then we will begin opening it to the community in Franklin, and that's where we would be doing the outreach. Part of what we looked at when we originally started working together is being near the neighborhoods, we think, where there'll be the most need in Franklin, so that it's easier to get there. Although if someone was to express difficulty in transportation, for example, we would try to help them get to us, if that's what's needed. So we would like not to tell someone, if we have the capacity and we're meeting all the needs, that you can't come here because you don't live in Franklin Township. We imagine that the vast majority, Franklin Township is a pretty big, big municipality, and I'm sure there's plenty of people who'll be able to avail themselves. It isn't free, which is one of the things that I just want to clarify, at least you have to go through some hoops in order for it to be free. And so it's not as easy as just, you know, coming in. And last time I checked, we have to usually drag people to, you know, come get their cancer screenings. We will do a lot to encourage people to avail themselves of the services we know they should have, even if they're not always so interested at the outset.
Any other council questions?
Yes, I have a question. So I understand that there's, in terms of services, more services provided than what the school nurse, per se, does today.
Yes.
But how does this work? Are you saying that students are going to just walk up to the truck, or their parents need to be there? Like, how does this work?
So, right now, I mean, right now, we do have the medical van, and during school hours, parents, we've only done this with the parents for the middle school, because it's the only school that's really right there. Parents are offered the opportunity to sign a waiver to allow their child to receive services during school hours without their presence. Only a handful of parents so far have agreed to that, otherwise, they have to come with their parents then. If they do, have they have agreed, because it's convenient for them, because they need their child to get certain services and they can't get time off of work, we will see the child, provide the services, and immediately call the parent to inform them of the services that we have agreed to. But otherwise, the children come with their parents. And if they, if they need a service, a lot of what we focused on this year was the services that the children need in order to stay in school, vaccinations, for example. And so in some cases, they're coming during school hours because the school nurse is bothering the parent, like, you've really got to get this done, and they're helping facilitate. We've got a great relationship with the nurses in the district, for them to tell us we've got somebody who really needs it, you know, can we get them in, and making sure that we bring along all the vaccines that are needed for the children that day. One day, we right now start very early in the morning, and one day, we stay later in the evening to try to accommodate people before and after work and school. And then ultimately, when we're in the building, you know, the children can't just leave school, right? The school district doesn't just let them out. And so it's usually the service would be facilitated between the school nurse and the parent and us.
Thank you. And just one follow-up to that is, so your services, are there any overlap between what the school does today, from the nurse's office to what you guys are doing? So are there like redundant services, or?
Not really, because the school nurse can't treat the child, right? So the child is sick, has a fever, right? They call the parent and say, your kid's sick, come pick them up, take them to the doctor, bring and get a note. So we're the doctor. And so we're, we will be the ones to see the child, and the provider will determine whether they, you know, need medication, if they should stay home, or whether they're cleared to go back to school. We will give them the note if they're cleared to go back to school. So we're just like a regular doctor's office, so the same function, and the school nurse, you know, goes, doesn't go beyond that. She's making sure that they have all the documentation of the services they need to be able to attend school, but then when they're actually ill, she'd be, he or he, would be referred, referring them to our services if they don't have their own doctor.
I have one quick question. Would you have mini pharmacies sort of a thing to give, dispense medication, maybe shots or anything like that?
We are fortunate to be part of a program that allows us to get affordable medications. We contract with other pharmacies, so that we don't, the only medications that we're generally directly dispensing are very inexpensive, an antibiotic, you know, an over-the-counter that we have some supplies so that they can have them right away. But then we would be providing a prescription for them to take to the pharmacy, but the prescription from us allows them to get discounted rates.
I know, obviously, conversations have progressed, you know, over the half, and you may have touched on this in the beginning, and I may have missed it, so in case I apologize. I know there was discussion. Oh, can you, can you, good?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I know that there were early discussions about putting it on the campus on the 27, potentially, or seeing if there was any opportunities, or I might be making that up.
That was originally supposed to be at Hillcrest.
It was originally supposed to be at Hillcrest School, so I am making it up. I made up history. So, okay, so originally supposed to be at Hillcrest School. I think that I'm going to come back to 27 in a bit, but we are in the parking lot, because I'm trying to visualize where this building would be.
I believe it's on the old tennis court.
Where the tennis courts were. At the corner of Burger and the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. And then you mentioned, you know, there's going to be like a facilitation, the nurse is going to help and support. How else do you anticipate kind of engaging the community to utilize the services? I know you said you've been fairly, you've been 100% success, right? Right, on doing this? But I just wanted to get a better understanding of, outside of the nurse's facilitation, how else will you get encouragement? And then I have one more question, then I'll seat it to Councilwoman Francois.
So, one of the important elements that we do have is, I mentioned outreach workers, and so they're going to attend every possible public event, go to other social service agencies, and make sure that they understand that when they identify someone with a need, that's the community part of it. Within the district, it's making, we are ready, the nurses already know, they're number one, because they're more aware of, you know, who's needing services, which families are struggling, et cetera. But even then, some people in the community, who are, who's Zoofall Health? Should I trust you? And so we recognize that we still have a lot of work to do to build rapport and get people to understand that we're a serious, reliable service, and so we are attending as many school events as we can. Last year, we went to many, we were starting toward the end of the school year, so there was lots of awards nights, and, you know, and so we would set up a table and be there to answer questions. We've made presentations to the various teacher groups, and so it's really just networking and getting people to understand who we are, begin to trust us.
Right, thanks. And my last question, I guess, touching on what I guess mistakenly remembered, or made up in my head, and I guess it's less for you and possibly more for Dr. Ravalli. I know that, I do recall that we have discussed extending resources kind of to the Franklin Park area on 27. Is there any further discussion on how we can bring certain resources that, you know, are very much concentrated on this side of town, further down the 27 corridor? Because I know we have significant populations, some of which who might, you know, meet some of the income eligibility that you're trying to serve. So I just want to get a sense of, I guess, how is there, are there any discussions to leverage further resources down and utilize some of that land and space, if at all possible? Or are there ways this body can support that? And not to put you on the spot, because it might be.
I can certainly speak a little bit to that. So the grant, as it was written, was written for, to be located in a specific area, and Hillcrest and the middle school both are kind of combined campus, so it's, you know, it's one area. With the idea that eventually, once established, there is the possibility for expansion, not only for the purposes of servicing schoolchildren, but for servicing community, school families, which is what the intention of the whole project is. So I think ultimately, that is dependent upon the resources available. Certainly, we have facility, you know, Fran is familiar with the facility, she's been there. And to speak about the nurses, the partnership really has grown out of our nursing team. So, you know, we're very fortunate in Franklin Township to have a team of school nurses that I will tell you are second to none. We're very proud of them, and they do wonderful work. And every other week, every second week on a Monday at 2:00 PM, virtually, we have a meeting, and our lead nurse and our assistant lead nurse are part of that, and they're bringing the feedback from our team of school nurses directly to Zoofall. And basically, I'm listening because they're directing, and that is what has made this partnership thus far successful, right? They talk about the need for kids missing multiple days, because, you know, there's regulations that require us to keep students out of school if you're not immunized by a certain time period. And this has helped us to avoid lots of that, which means more days in school for kids and more learning. So, I think there's that possibility, Fran, and I don't want to speak for Zoofall, but we had talked about, you know, the grant requires us to be here to get things going. But once we're going, and once Zoofall is more self-sustaining, for lack of better terms, I think there's that possibility for sure. I mean, you know, the healthier we all are, the better we all are, and that's what we're after here with this partnership, so.
I appreciate it, Dr. Ravalli, and apologize, and thank you for walking me through that. I think I combined a couple of initiatives together in my head, so thank you for clarifying, but I think it's an and.
But I want to add, and actually, it's coming back to the other question about financial sustainability. When we were first having this discussion, I said, if we're not talking about expanding to the larger, you know, community. expanding to the, to the larger, you know, community, it's less interesting to us because we need to make sure we're seeing enough patients so that we have enough revenue. So, you know, we, we, and that's one of the things, actually, we had to demonstrate in our grant proposal, was to say, like, how are you going to sustain this? Because apparently, it has happened across the country. Somebody set up a very closed, school-based service, and then they didn't have enough business to make it work. So I think that I'm, I'm happy to hear there's interest in serving the larger community because that's ultimately better for us, too.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to interject here some things that I think need to be said. So the discussions that, that, that we have had with the Board of Education and that I have had with Dr. Ravalley and Fran and her staff related to this, I, I just want to just focus on a couple of things here. One, the recipient of any funds from the American Rescue Plan would be the Board of Education, not Zoo Fall. The building would be owned by the Board of Education, and, and then the Board of Education would make available to Zoo Fall that building for this purpose. So that's one. So the recipient is the Board of Education, the Board of Education property is where it will be. The location of this facility is important also as it relates to American Rescue Plan. This location falls within a census tract that qualifies as low-income. It is one of those census tracts that we qualify for CDBG grant funding because of that, the fact that we have those census tracts here in town. The focus of all of this is the focus of the American Rescue Plan funding, to serve the underserved part of our population. And, and to be honest, the underserved part of our population, whether or not they live in Franklin Township is irrelevant to that particular application. So it certainly would be available in the future to people who don't live in Franklin Township. There is no, no, nothing attached to this health care being provided to people as far as where they live. The goal here, as we've worked through this over the last year and a half, which I think it probably is about a year and a half, is that the initial focus of this health care would be on students of the school system, then growing to students and their families, and then growing to the greater public as the, as this, as this, this healthcare clinic grew. So it, that, I, I hope that clears some things up. The location is specific, not only because the grant that they currently have calls for it to be at that specific location, because that's how it was written, but also, the American Rescue Plan funding is, was really intended to target that part of the, the American population that was, has been historically underserved and was specifically most hard-hit by the COVID pandemic. So that's why we focus on that particular area of our town, because that, in fact, meets all of those, checks all those boxes, so to speak. So that, that's kind of why we're at where we're at.
And I'll add, healthcare is local. People often, especially if you're working multiple jobs and have kids and parents you're taking care of, you don't have time to drive, you know, an hour and a half to, to go to the doctor. So the closer we can be to the communities who need us most, the more successful we'll be. And the only thing really keeping us from expanding right now is a space.
Space.
I mean, we're using our vehicle, but that, that vehicle is meant to serve our entire seven-county area, but we're dedicating it two whole days a week for Franklin so that we could try to get started. But people, you know, don't need the doctor only on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we want to be able to, you know, expand to, you know, at, at least Monday through Friday to start, and most of our services, we try to add a weekend so that we can be available outside of Monday through Friday for those who are working those hours.
Any other count? Oh, go ahead. Just on, on that note, what are your, your hours going to be? Do you match the school hours, or you have extended hours for the?
Yeah, like, as I mentioned, we're currently doing an early morning and then a later evening because we're, we're generally trying to, to provide options for people. So we will definitely be open Monday through Friday, and then we'll choose whichever days make the most sense for what the community needs to be either, we find early mornings are also beneficial for some people, and later in the evening is better for others. So we try to usually have a day or two that has those options. And then when, when we have enough staffing, and, you know, like the rest of the country, we're also struggling with, with staffing. We hope to employ some people, local, as well. And when we're able to, and there's enough demand, we'll add more days a Saturday, for example, when we have, when we're filling up.
Fran, just out of curiosity, so for those of you who are not familiar, there is a facility in Somerville. What are the hours in Somerville? Do you know off the top of your head? I could look online real quick for you.
Yeah, I can look online. We're open definitely Monday through Saturday, and I think some days are open like 7:30 to 4:30, and other days maybe 9:00 to 6:00. I don't, don't have that one memorized, but it is, all of our sites are listed yet.
Mr. Ray.
Just a small question. In need of Franklin Township schools was significant. Over half the children at selected schools were economically disadvantaged, and over 20% of the children were uninsured or had no insurance or limited access to primary care. I definitely know what the primary care is, and I definitely know how, as Mr. Bornlocker said, the census tract moved us toward that little area. But could you span that 20%?
I believe, then again, this was probably at least two years ago that we put that data together. We were looking at specifically, I think, maybe Hillcre, I mean, Pine, Pine Grove and Hillcrest, principally those schools. And the district actually has quite a bit of data on if people have insurance. I don't remember whether that came from the district or from data that we.
No, it comes from the. Microphone, please. We want the world to hear this.
I hear you, sir. The state of New Jersey requires us to file a report each year, reporting the number of students who report themselves, or families that report themselves as uninsured. So that number came from us as a self-reported, a family self-report as to whether they have insurance or not.
Remembering, there is another source of data. Every year, we submit data, and every other organization like us in the country to collected data repository. And then that is compared against the local population data, and they give us something they call the penetration rate, which means like how many people who are low-income are indicating, you are serving in that community. So I believe we also relied on that, that we could say that, we looked at neighboring health centers, how many people are they serving from this community? We looked at our own data, how many are coming to Somerville? And then there was the remainder that, by the data, don't seem to be connecting to services.
So somewhere along the line through this census tract, being that it's over in this particular section, if I came to you next year and you found out that everyone you served had zero on the health care meter, you can come back and tell us, well, you know, we've seen that the data here, and it's way higher than what we thought it would be. So you could tell us, you know, Dr. Ravalley, since she's at the school, that's just in case someone asked what the story would be, there'd be an answer for them that we wouldn't have to, you know, I wouldn't have to go back into the weeds and ask that question. I mean, we.
We, we will certainly be able to say, we'll, we keep track of everything, so we'll be able to say how many people for what services, obviously, you know, collectively, not, nothing that would reveal anyone's identity. It takes for the, for the federal data to catch up, it takes like another year to actually show an impact, because they're always, you know, they're counting last year's data. So even if we began today and we're serving tons of people, we wouldn't probably see it for another year in the federal data to see the impact on, is there a lower number of people who are not accessing services? But ultimately, we could, we could begin to track that progress.
The reason why I asked that, when we had the meeting earlier with the Board of Education, I got it. But for everyone that's on tape, if they don't understand that one little question, I wanted to make sure that they grab it, and then they can say, okay, this is how we get the information. It's not coming to, to me tomorrow. You said that the federal government says, let's wind that clock a little bit, and then we'll come back and give you an answer. That's all I needed to hear.
But at any given moment, we can tell you, like we included in here, this is how many people, this is how many visits, this is what services we provided. We can get that, really almost, I can get yesterday's data if we needed to.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yeah, mayor. I remember vividly that I brought this health issue to Somerset Health Department, which this process, which covers this process. Because I know, in my community, have very low health coverage, and this process will actually help them. I'm highly in support of this. Two, but the issue I have here is communication. How are we going to communicate it to, are they going to know about it?
So, one of the things that we can do, and again, in partnership with information from your experience, you, you know the municipality better than we do. So, well, listen, if you tell me that there are, there's a, you know, community that will, will be, will better understand or be more trusting if we provide information in another language, for example. We routinely translate everything into Spanish because that tends to be the highest amount of people who, who need another lang, who are more comfortable. Doesn't mean they don't speak English, but they're, they're talking to their doctor, right? They're talking about their personal issues, they're more comfortable in their first language. And so, if, if someone feels the same way, other than Spanish, we do use a telephone interpreter service, and we can also, if we have any printed materials, we can make them available in, in any other language.
Pamphlets, right? Pamphlet, okay. That's good, thank you.
Nobody wants them anymore. Everybody wants it on their phone, so we do the QR codes. But yeah, we, we can accommodate hundreds of languages.
Anyone else?
As, as well as a sign, hearing impaired as well, we can do video for people who are using American Sign Language.
Thank you. Councilmember Potash.
You talked a lot about students, which is great, but if a parent takes a child to the facility, assuming it's built and up and running and approvals and all that, they can also receive medical services themselves. This is for adults and for children, the whole community.
Yes, that would be the ultimate goal, is everybody, from birth to old age, everybody.
That's awesome. And I want to thank you, Dr. Ravalley, Ms. Palm, for bringing this and having the insight. I served seven years on the school board before being on council, and before that, almost a decade as a classroom teacher. And one of the things, when I was on the school board, John will remember this a lot, I talked about community schools. How do we bring the community into the school? Because there are so many things that are great about what's happening, and also so many needs that need a landing place. And with Franklin, the way it is, so many different villages, some folks don't even realize there's another side of town, or how different it is in these different locations. And I think this is the beginning of something, and you already started with a mobile unit, but with a physical home for the medical services, that's really important. I'm going to make a few comments. One, just to kind of put it in perspective, around 61,000 people are hospitalized every year because they have a tooth infection. Totally treatable, totally preventable. 66 people die in America because of a tooth infection. That's like a person a month that doesn't need to die. Likely, they're uninsured, they don't have access. So this will make a difference. And, you know, I think with dental care, the numbers are even lower sometimes than healthcare and, and the support, so it's awesome that you have that there. And then, and also thinking about it, too, guns are now, as of 2019, the leading killer of children, deaths by gun, which is sad. And then, second to that, car accidents. But for students to learn, which is ultimately what's happening in the schools, that, that, you know, those statistics are awful unto themselves, and we need to do more there, but you have to be ready to learn. That means you're fed, that means you're healthy, that means that you can pay attention in the classroom, you have an opportunity to sleep, an environment where you can be awake and ready to go. And in my opinion, with the American Rescue Plan dollars, which came in the wake of a healthcare emergency, COVID, there's really no better way to invest them than in a health facility. And I just would love to ask one sort of final question. What role would you have seen, and if there is a future pandemic, and maybe we have to wait another 100 years? Let's hope.
Let that be so.
We're, we're here around for it. What role would the Zoo Fall Health Center in that location play in a similar situation in the future?
I'll have to like put my trauma aside from, obviously, as a healthcare entity, I mean, everybody suffered through this, so it's, it's not unique, I know, but of, we had to completely transform to prioritize public health. We, we are not a health department, we, we didn't see ourselves necessarily in that role, but that need was apparent. And so, we diverted resources. So for example, all those outreach people that we have are going out there trying to, they were helping us run community vaccination clinics. We were doing, well, before the vaccine was available, we were just offering testing. So we, before we even understood, we could let them in the building. We had set up, you know, come up to the front door and test. So we, we completely, on a dime, transformed. And unlike some health offices, we never closed, never one day, because if your doctor's not there for you, then you feel really lost, right? Especially when there's a health crisis going on. We put out as much information as we could. Obviously, the information was changing rapidly. We had meetings twice a day because things were changing from the morning to the, to the afternoon. As, as, as a country, we were learning more about how this virus worked and what precautions were actually going to work. So this site would be like no other, we would provide exactly the same, and so we would transform in whatever way to meet whatever health crisis. Fortunately, we had to, we were all prepared, but when MPOCs, or it was commonly monkeypox, came around, we were gearing up again. Unfortunately, it wasn't as large, but the State Department of Health did call upon us to provide testing and vaccinations. It was on a much smaller scale. But we're now unfortunately experienced in, in, you know, turning on a dime to address a public health emergency.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Saving the best for last, since I skipped there accidentally.
Skipped me about 50,000 times, but that's okay, that's okay.
Twice.
I just want to say that I'm totally in support of this initiative. I sat in on the presentation a while ago, and I did have concerns about sustainability, but you answered all of those questions that I had. I do believe healthcare is local, and the needs have to be served locally. It's, it's a good fit, use case for the American Rescue Plan funding that we're going to get, and it's, it's, it's there to provide school, it's going to be a school-based site to provide school-based healthcare. And one of the things that came out when we heard that presentation was that a lot of times, the kids can't go to school because they don't have the immunizations. That was a selling point for me. And so, I, you know, I think this is, that's what the money was intended for, it's a great use case, and I think we need to go forward with it. I'm looking forward to the partnership that we have with the Board of Education and Zoo Fall. Thank you.
Thank you. It is really a wonderful partnership if we are able to, to do this, you know, with three, three different organizations. And certainly, what I know is that this is, you know, partnerships are always of interest to private funders as well. And so, I am confident we will be able to, because our, our commitment is to, if you provide the building, we will furnish it. And that's very expensive. Some of our grant funding can pay for that, but we already know of other partners. I won't, I won't jinx that, I won't say who, but there are some that are, I know, already lined up and want to provide support.
Mr. Bornlocker, how much money are we talking about?
About 1.5 million of the 7.7 that we received.
My final comments are, I don't know that much about the healthcare system. But what I, what I do know is, Councilmember Potasnik put his finger on it. For kids to learn, they've got to have food, they've got to have safety, and they've got to be healthy. And this is one arm of that.
And one of the things that I think we do, I say we're like the regular doctor's office, but we are more than that. And we're always attuned to what we call the social determinants of health. So there's things that are also getting in the way. You also probably aren't going to make it to the doctor if you couldn't sleep, because if your car broke down, if you lost your job. There's all kinds of things that get in the way of actually taking care of your health. And so, we're equally attuned to those things, and we'll want to build the strongest partnerships with your other community organizations who are addressing those needs. We can't address all of those, but we can make the connections and understand that if you can't afford your insulin, then your diabetes is going to get worse if you needed it. So we'll be looking for, we're on the lookout always for the other things that will get in the way of people being healthy.
Great. Dr. Ravalli, I'll give you the last word.
I just wanted to first say thanks. Thanks for giving us the opportunity. I also wanted to thank Mr. Vornlocker. As you know, Mayor, Mr. Vornlocker and I are always talking and always on the phone. And I have to tell you, he was super supportive. From the moment that he learned that we had this opportunity to partner, and that Zofol had approached us, and I'm talking probably better than two years ago, Mr. Vornlocker said directly to me, you know, this would be a great thing for our community. We've got to care for our kids, and certainly our larger community could benefit as well. So if there's any way, going forward, we think that we could put this all together for the betterment of Franklin, please let me, you know, hear from me. And so, you know, we knocked on the door, and Fran said, I think that's something we certainly could do. And so, better than a year and a half ago, we started the conversation. So I wanted to thank Bob for him reaching out, and I think you should be proud of that. He certainly had your interests and the interest of the community at heart. So I appreciate that, Bob. And I think, you know, as this goes forward, this could be a really wonderful thing for Franklin, having our own health center. Right now, we send our kids to Chandler, which is in New Brunswick, or they have to try and make the trek out to Somerville, you know, putting this facility in our own town and making it accessible to the entire community, not just the children, not just the families of the children, but eventually, the entire community, I think, is going to make for a healthier Franklin and just a better place. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Vornlocker, do you need a vote? Do you need head nods?
I think that what will happen is, as we move forward, there'll be a resolution in the council that, on an agenda that you'll vote on for that purpose. So I'll move forward with Deb Mitchell to prepare all of that so that we can get this, get this ball rolling, so to speak.
Excellent. Very exciting. We are now on to item number seven, public discussion. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak can come to the microphone. You're limited to five minutes. Please state your name and address. You may only speak once.
Good afternoon, or good evening, actually. Alex Carazzi, 14, Margaret Drive, Somerset. Honestly, this was an amazing presentation. And I was in the advisory board meeting of Food Bank yesterday, and as you know, they serve about 2,000 families. And one of the things that they brought up was a need for a clinic to serve the people that they go to Food Bank. And in fact, they were thinking of getting a place, somehow doing something for those needy people. And after I hear this, I said, wow, what a great opportunity here to partner them and connect them with the Food Bank, with the 2,000 families that they have in need. And of course, they have children as well. So it will be a great opportunity for them to take advantage of this. And the other thing I wanted to mention, that as a husband of a retired nurse, school nurse, I had seen so many days and nights that my wife used to make phone calls, write letters, asking children to either be engrafted or put their physical, or have their physical completed and so forth. And having this service in town is really going to be great. And I'm sure they, all the nurses will love this service. So this is a beautiful thing for our township, and I'm so happy that the council, as well as Bob, has done a great effort to bring this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Debbie Stewart, to Farrington Plaza. This is kind of a long, open-ended question, more of a learning experience. You know, about a year ago, we all started coming here, and we get, we're getting a good education in municipal governance. But we're still confused with ordinances. At least I am, and I think a few of my friends are as well. So really, I'm just going to have a little narrative with some questions, and one of, maybe the mayor or council could answer after. The steps of the ordinance. So, how does an ordinance become introduced? Who comes up with the idea? The council, the commissions, residents? And then who puts it together, who writes it up? And then you have, if you can explain the difference between the first reading, the second reading? When are people allowed to comment on the ordinance itself? Is it only at the second reading? Or knowing that there's an ordinance going to be introduced at the first reading, can they, in open discussion, ask you questions about that ordinance? Okay, so I'm throwing the questions out there. A little confusing. So, also, let's say, tonight, we hear about an ordinance. I know you have quite a few on here. And we have questions, or we think we could, there could be improvements or changes. When would a resident communicate those suggestions to you? Is it after the first reading, by email, by phone calls, or do you have to wait until the second reading? And then if you do, let's say we came up with suggestions, and you said, yeah, they sound good. Now, are you going back and rewriting the ordinance, and then it goes, reverts back to a first reading? I know this is, if it's complicated, I hope somebody's understanding what I'm saying. But it's, oh, wow. Yay. Okay. So, yeah. And then, another thing, when an ordinance does finally get, I don't have the lingo here, passed, made law, does it happen? I know it has to go to the county X amount of days. But it seems like some have to be, are, some issues, people are grandfathered, and some issues, they don't have to be grandfathered, and it takes place immediately. So where is the distinction between that? Stop laughing, Mr. Vornlocker. I hear you. Okay.
Higher code of the state.
I do. Okay. So maybe this is one of your seminars that you've done before, but I don't think you're going to get a really big turnout.
I think we can cover it tonight.
Good. Okay. Is it, okay. So is it a unique procedure to each municipality, or is it, it's a, okay. I hope I've, and also, then I have one minute left to, I used your pothole little app thing today, which was very cool. Pothole and tall grasses. So I hope, I'm going to see how long it takes for that actually to happen.
Goes to me immediately, so it'll happen fast.
A pothole on metlars and the grasses along the Western Canal, the township portion, where they grow out of the guardrail, and people have to go around them. Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, council. Good to be back with you. Doc Cunningham, 11 Star Court, Somerset. Wanted to stop by to add my voice of commendation and congratulations to, two events had happened recently in town. One was the diversity festival that the Franklin Township School District put on. And I shared my shout-outs to Dr. Ravalli personally before he left. And then, secondly, the one-year anniversary of the youth center. Those events were both inspiring and refreshing in many ways. And if you were there, you might recall the mayor's opening remarks when he said, welcome to the house that Kimberly built. And it was kind of a nod to Councilwoman Kimberly Francois for the vision that she has had, and others, for the youth center, the perseverance they had in carrying it through, and the commitment that it took, and the commitment that they have demonstrated over the years to Franklin Township and the youth in particular. Now, I wanted to swing by because I, from what I've heard so far, too, it makes sense that what the township is oftentimes interested in doing is bridging the gaps and building bridges. As many of you know, I'm involved with civic and social issues. And so, as I considered much of what was shared at the youth center anniversary, I thought about the fact that, you know, personal and professional lives, we're used to seeing townships and companies and media players build new buildings. And there's a celebration for the new building and what that means and will entail. There are groups that spend time trying to prepare young people to get into good careers, right? But the question I often ask myself is this, what are we doing to prepare folks to be better citizens? And so, from what I'm involved with and some of what I've heard, what C American Color, the socialist campaigning platform that I started, is focused on doing just that. And I'm sure I'm not the only one who is disappointed that a good segment of the population in America doesn't vote. I'm sure I'm not the only one who is frustrated by the fact that there is a segment of the population who is hung up on conspiracy theories and grievance. I'm sure I'm not the only one who is outraged by the fact that something like January 6th happened, and folks want to pretend as if it didn't happen, or it wasn't as bad as it was. I'm sure I'm not the only one in this town who's frustrated by an incident that happened recently in town that resulted in a death. And it's not just here, because something similar happened in Lewis County, 15-year-old who was charged with weapons possession and attempted murder. And I'm sure you saw the story last night about the young man who drove a truck into the gate at the White House, the security gate, right? So what am I saying? What C American Color is launching is a program based on the fact that in three years, we'll be celebrating the 258th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And we're launching a series of virtual and impersonal events based on the theme, America Zero to 250. And the hook for the conversation we hope to have is this, that America's got a fever. And if your parents, you know, when your child's a fever, you've got to figure out what's causing the fever, because more likely, the body is fighting something. Well, similarly, America is fighting something. And we're hoping that conversation will generate ideas and solutions for how we break that fever. So we've already reached out to public officials at all levels, federal, national, locals. As a matter of fact, I shared the background with Congressman, with Councilman Wright and Deputy Mayor Ram, and I'm hoping that he'll consider being part of the panel discussion. Lastly, I'll say this. I'm hoping that when it's all is said and done, and folks begin to understand the partnership that C American Color is interested in establishing, not just with this township council, but with township councils across the state, is so that we can say, welcome to a new America, where we, the people, built the house. I brought some handouts that I shared with Deputy Mayor, and I'll be happy to leave them here, and more details will be forthcoming. But thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Kathy. Mom, 237 Samuel Place, Franklin Township. We live in a house that's surrounded by three streets, Samuel Place. And then, to the left of the house is Garfield Avenue, and to the right is Equator. And today, I was happy to see new paving going on. And then I happened to notice, it was kind of jarring, that one of the big trucks doing the work, a very huge truck, is painted with the thin blue line flag. I know that this town rides itself on being diverse. And so I took photos I can give to you. The truck has been contracted out, I guess, by the town to a company called Lorre, L-O-R-E, Sweeping Company, 175 River Drive in Bayside, New Jersey. You know, I know the town doesn't, it's not a town truck doing this, but I thought you would want to know that this is going on, and that it might be really offensive to many of us to see this. Because the thin blue line flag is associated with white supremacy. And I don't think we should have any way of being involved with that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
So I, you can give it to them. So it would be a contract with the town.
We're going to wait till the end to address.
So it would be a contract with the town, Mayor. It's not, has nothing to do with the town.
We're going to wait till the end to address these.
Yes, please.
Anyone else?
Everyone. Beverly Lawson, 2004 Amwell Road. All right, one question, which will probably you might be able to answer. At the last meeting, the mayor mentioned that the police department got a new vehicle, like emergency response vehicle. And you mentioned, previous to that, they had to tow the old vehicle if there was an issue. I'm not even going to ask how many times that had to happen, because it's kind of embarrassing. But by any chance, would you know the cost of the new vehicle, and what happened to the old vehicle? Is it going to auction?
It will answer later.
Want me to answer later? I'll answer you later.
Okay. And as far as the thin blue line, it is not white supremacy. I am pro-police. We need police. This town, as far as the police department, they show up for everything. They're community-oriented. And as far as I'm concerned, that thin blue line is a good thing. So as far as that, I hope every contractor has one, because it's letting you know they're watching out for you. They're your neighbor. If they see something, those are the people that will probably make a phone call and report it. Those are the people that will probably help the police if they're in any kind of dire issue or anything. So as far as I'm concerned, the police will not be defunded in Franklin Township.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jan Brant, 22 Bryant Court. So I have a couple things to say. One of the things I wanted to mention was with the tree fund and all. And I just wanted to ask council that, when, I guess, sometimes there might be trees that are asked to be put on another area that's not a municipal area, that comes from the shade tree fund. And I hope that, I think it's not fair if trees are put on private properties. I think that when there's funds that are in the shade tree fund, that there shouldn't be a particular development or area that is decided that trees will be put on. And I am talking about a particular situation where at Canal Walk, I think it was like $89,000 worth of trees that maybe they were anticipating if a certain development was built. And I just don't think that's right to, you know, for the council. I think it becomes your ultimate decision to do. And I think that that sets a precedent for certain other, you know, developments and all. And I don't think that that's the right thing to do, you know, to take that money. money when really that money should be put on. I'm sure there's lots of areas in, you know, Franklin Township where trees can be placed. Number two, I want to thank you, Mr. Vornlocker and the mayor, and the Safety Officer, Merrick Mayweather, I think that's her name. So I spoke with her today, you know, been having a, a problem where I can hear from 700 feet away idling trucks late at night and all. And, and really, I found out today from her that they're allowed to idle wherever they want to unless there's parking signs overnight. So I appreciate those parking signs on Jensen Drive. One of the questions that I have, and maybe you could answer it later, Mr. Vornlocker, is it seems like those idling, idling signs that were put out on Jensen Drive has forced the trucks closer to actually where I live. And now these trucks are like idling in the employee parking lot, which is about 500 feet from my house, so they're even louder. So after I'm done, if you could address trucks idling in parking lots of warehouses, that would be great. And then, you know, and, and it's a little disturbing to know that, I guess, what I found out today was trucks that are 2007 up to now, that the truck drivers can idle in them and go to sleep and whatnot. The only thing that would deter them is if there's signs that say, "No parking" and "No idling" and all. And so that's, you know, it's worrisome because there's just so many trucks that are going to be coming to Franklin Township, and I just worry about that. And I'm looking forward to you all doing that, that traffic study because I really think when I look at the list of all the warehouses that are on, you know, Schoolhouse and Heller and Jensen and Wiley and Belmont, you know, a lot of them aren't occupied yet. But I, I think that once that traffic study is done, that I, I would be surprised if you don't find out that really our roads are not suited for all these trucks that are going to be driving in the warehouses, especially with the, the idling and whatnot. And, and that might, I, I know that there's some, I've heard that there's some lawsuits that warehouses, you know, where they want to build. And perhaps maybe once that study is done, maybe you'll have evidence to see that, that the roads really aren't equipped. I mean, right now, it seems that there's just a lot of idling trucks out there and a lot of traffic, and it's really hard to get around. And there's a large percentage of warehouses that haven't been occupied yet and aren't fully uprunning. So I look forward to, I know that you all said that that study, that traffic study's going to be soon. And what'll really be good about that traffic study, I know all the warehouses do traffic studies, however, they don't do traffic studies that encompass the whole area. And once that's done, you know, it, I, I'm looking forward to it because I will feel safer driving on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You don't have to run.
Shauna College, 2201 Jackie Hollow Trail. Good evening. To counter back on what Jan was saying, this morning, I face, I kind of face the Schoolhouse Road. I counted four 18-wheeler trucks coming from West Canal, Western Canal, where they're not supposed to go, and they're going toward Randolph. Four 18-wheelers. They're not even supposed to be on that stretch of the road. So I'm really getting concerned that we can't, if we can't control the trucks, that they're not even obeying the rules, and you're supposed to obey rules and they're not, they're coming this way, what are we, what are we going to do when warehouses or that B9 hopefully will never come, but that's up to you all, but they're, they're going, it's going to be a lot. I'm telling you, I don't know, you call the police, you say to call the police? Well, you know, they're not going to, it takes 45 minutes for them to come, and it's not fair. You're taking them away from important things that have to be. So I know you're laughing, but...
I'm laughing.
Okay. Oh, I'm so glad. Somebody else is frustrated.
Mr. Vornlocker, it's her time.
Sorry. No, but thank you, thank you. That's all I had to say. But I'm just worried for safety. And again, in front of my unit, people are stopping over there, they're making U-turns. The other day, they almost went down the hill. So there's a lot going on in there, so help us along to, to get that traffic. But thank you so much. And I'm so glad somebody else is frustrated. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just lie.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
When we move, we close public comment. Second one.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of closing public comments, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Public comments are closed, and I'm going to do something a little bit different since there were some legal questions asked. I'll call on Mr. Renaud to answer.
So this, Mayor, this is a three-credit course and a lab.
At least, I have four credits.
Is there going to be homework?
There will be homework.
Take some notes.
So, so the process of, of getting an ordinance on our agenda is not as, there's not a defined line. So ordinances come from all kinds of different places. They come from people in the audience, come up with ideas, they come from members of council, they come from communications we get, they come from, probably most frequently, they come from our staff who, and you'll look at the ordinances, they're, believe it or not, not all of our ordinances are about zoning or about warehouses. We have lots of other ordinances, and you'll see them all, and they're different subject matters. They come from our police departments and our, our, you know, principal departments. And, excuse me? Oh, of course, when they, they emanate from when we have our budget and we, we authorize capital projects, we do bonding and we do borrowing. So there's all, there's all, all different parts. You've seen in these chambers, if you've been here for the last year, that there's a lot of suggestions that members of the public have made that have found their way into ordinances. In Franklin, we have a very competent clerk. She, she generally does the, the yeoman's job in drafting a lot of the ordinances, though my hand is in them, and if they're planning and zoning ordinances, it's not unusual for those departments to be in them. There's an ordinance on tonight that Mr. Vornlocker and I just did ourselves. We draw on a, a number of different places. So, so that's how it happens. So let's talk a little bit about the process. So this, this process, by the way, is, it's not different from municipality to municipality. It's all part of New Jersey state law. I might, might be the only lawyer in the world that knows that it's the Home Rule Act of 1931, but leaving that aside, but it's found in the New Jersey statute, and it requires that all ordinances to be introduced at one meeting and adopted at a meeting that is usually more than 10 days later. That, that timeframe's a little bit expanded when it talk, when we talk about financing ordinances, it requires a little bit more time. Every ordinance that's introduced has to have a public hearing. That's what that second meeting is. So this first reading is introduction, second reading is, is a public hearing and, and adoption. We have a requirement in the law, once again, all, this is a state law for all municipalities, that those ordinances have to be published. Depending on the types of ordinances, some, sometimes they're published in summary, but generally the ordinances are published in full with a summary that explains what they are. For land use ordinances, once again, if this gets too complicated, tell me to stop. For land use ordinances, there's certain land use ordinances that require us to send specific notice to people who are within 200 feet of zones where there are change, those development ordinances. So that's a, another heightened kind of a notice requirement. Land use ordinances are also kind of unique because they require a review by the planning board. So we introduce ordinances, and then we have to wait a 35-day period to give the planning board the opportunity to review. And the planning board, that's a role that the planning board has where they only, they advise us, and they do a, they, they do a review of the ordinance to determine whether it's in compliance with our master plan or not. Now, that doesn't mean the council can't adopt an ordinance that's not consistent with its master plan, they just would have to put certain information on the record, facts on the record. So that's generally, that's generally the process. As to when people can speak, now, one other part of it, so all ordinances then take effect 20 days after they're published. And so that, that's a period of time that's provided where, where what's known as a Faulkner Act municipality, some people call it a optional municipal charter law, but it's a, it's the optionable municipal charter law of 1950 that provides for kind of the, our, our corporate charter. So under the Faulkner Act, it takes, we have to wait 20 days after publications before then ordinance takes effect. Before I get to the issue as to, I, whether or not an ordinance is effective immediately or whether it applies to a certain circumstance, just in terms of the way we operate our meetings, there's two different public portions of this meeting. Sometimes tonight, there's four or five different portions. There's one general public portion that under the Open Public Meetings Act is available for people to comment on any item of interest, essentially.
Any item related to government?
Related to government, which is pretty much every item of interest. It's pretty broad, and I've never, I've never seen a circumstance where a court has said that there's some subject that's, that's not. So what does that mean? That means that you can stand up and say, "I think you should adopt an ordinance." You should, you can stand up and say, "I think that the ordinance that you're introducing tonight is good or bad." So you can certainly comment on any item that's on our agenda, whether it's an ordinance on first reading or, or second reading. But when it comes to the public hearing on the, on an ordinance, the dedicated public hearing, then that hearing is only for that ordinance. So you can only comment on that ordinance, it's not for, for other subjects. So, so that's the important part. An issue that we've talked about a lot here, and I probably have given this, this portion of the seminar before, I think in the last year a number of times, is that the, certain land use ordinances, there's, there's a concept in, in zoning ordinances, in land use ordinances that, that are called prior non-conforming uses. So when we pass a zoning ordinance and, and we say that we changed the zone from retail to residential, if you're in the zone and you have a retail business, you're allowed to stay there. We can't, we, because otherwise that would be a taking. We would be, we would be, if, if we said, well, you had a retail store and we changed your zoning to residential and you can no longer be there, that's effectively us taking your property. So the law, the, the law in New Jersey, and it's really based in the Constitution, protects people from having, from that happening. So you're allowed to continue on if the zoning ordinance changes, you know, but if you expanded substantially, then you have to now go to the zoning board because you're no longer a conforming use. The last, but not least of this is the, what everybody calls the time of application rule, which once upon a time was called the time of decision rule. So the law in New Jersey, for as long as the municipal land use law was in effect, which is, by the way, zoning is a relatively new concept. Up until the 1940s, land use was controlled by plumbing codes, which is, I know this seems odd, but it was. There was the State Planning Act, which is, was in the 1950s, but the municipal land use law was 1976. So when the municipal land use law was adopted, there was a concept of the time of decision, which meant you were entitled to have whatever application you had before a board decided based upon the law in effect on the date the decision was made. The good news for municipalities is that people could show up at a meeting and say, "Hey, did you know there's an application before the planning board to allow a food store?" And we don't want a food store in that, in that circumstance. And the council could literally, during the pendency of that planning board application, change the zoning ordinance, and if that ordinance was in effect on the day that the planning board made the decision, they had to, they had to apply that ordinance. So I, I, most folks don't know a lot about me, other than the fact that I have a practice that is solely limited to representing public entities, but in the 42 years I've, on occasion, represented people who built things. I argued a case called Yonkers Contracting versus the Township of Old Bridge in the Supreme Court. And in that case, I lost. I always like to point those cases out. And in that case, it, what, there was a shopping center proposed, a ShopRite Shopping Center. And while that application was pending, the planning board, the, the council in Old Bridge changed the zoning ordinance and rezoned it to residential. There was a denial and ultimately upheld by the Supreme Court, and they said, "No, that's the time of, that's the time of decision rule," whatever was in effect. About four or five years ago, I guess now, as a result of the fact that, as you can imagine, and I know everybody here has a point of view, but as you can imagine, that is a, that is a power that gives governing bodies the ability to create great mischief. And it's also, there's some, and once again, I know everybody has a point of view, but you can imagine to, if you were a, not somebody who was building a gigantic warehouse and you were a multinational corporation, but you were somebody who was building a small office building to put your law practice in. And you spent all the money to design it, you spent $100,000 it takes to engineer it and do all of those things, and, and you buy the property and it's zoned correctly, and you get to the date that you're going to care, get, have the planning board make a decision, and the council changes the ordinance. So there were equities in either direction. The legislature, I, I think, based in large part on the lobbying by the develop, development community, changed that to what's known as the time of application rule. And the time of application rule now says for zoning applications that you are entitled to the zoning that's in place at the time that you file your application. We talk a lot about complete applications, so now I get to talk about the case that I actually won in the Supreme Court, which is Durham Associates versus Dunbar Associates, right? Dunbar versus, versus Franklin Township that I argued in the Supreme Court for Franklin Township. And what the Supreme Court said was, your, your application doesn't have to be deemed complete, but what you have to do is you have to file a complete application. And by complete application, it means you have to have all of the documents filed that are required, the, the definition of an application is all of the documents required by ordinance to be filed. So if you do that, then you're entitled to have your application heard on the ordinance in effect on the day that you do that. So that's, that's why we are, we are kind of where we are with regards to, for instance, specifically the B9 application. So generally, that is, that is said, the other thing that will be, just my public service announcement, is that we generally don't use the phrase grandfathering when we refer to statutes because it has a very storied history, and it's not something, I read an appellate division case the other day in a pretty strongly worded footnote that they asked lawyers to stop using that phrase. So we don't anymore, but, so we use the time of application rule.
That was good. I, I don't take offense to the grandfather rule now because I am one, but now, as of Friday, but that's...
Congratulations.
But I, there was, I think there was one other question that was asked that...
Can I talk about the tree ordinance?
No, no, I'll talk about that one. I, I got that one covered because I appointed a shade tree commission, so I'll, I'll handle that. But no, one of, the other question that was asked by the same woman who asked all of those other questions was, what happens when you decide to change it?
Okay. So, so the other, the other thing that happens is this, so now, so now we introduce an ordinance and we think we got it right, but we get to the second reading and the public, there's public comment, or maybe comment from the council, and they say, "Well, you know, we, we really, we really need to change this. We, we allow parking on, on Main Street, but we only allowed it for a certain part. We want to allow it for all of Main Street." So what the law says is that if the change is substantial, then you have to re, you have to change, you have to amend the ordinance, but then you have to re-advertise it, and you have to have a public hearing on the changed ordinance. If it's minor, let's say the council person says, "Well, you know, Mr. Renaud, there's a typo in the ordinance, can we fix that typo?" And it doesn't change the meaning of it, we can fix that and then adopt the ordinance the same night. But if there's a substantial change, then we would have to reintroduce it. And this is only if it's on second reading. If it's on first reading and, and we make a comment, then we can just amend it on first reading and then we publish it correctly. But the point is that the ordinance that gets published has to be the ordinance in substantially that same form, has to be the ordinance that's adopted. And I really wanted to answer the tree question, but you're not going to let me do it?
No. If you want to...
Excuse me. Apparently council has no choice in who's answering and...
I'm sorry.
Or not.
Through the mayor.
So, so we have some role here.
I have several to answer here, so I have my cheat sheet.
Mr. Vornlocker, and you're in good time. So... So now for council comments, we'll start with...
Are you not going to answer all the questions now?
We'll answer the questions when it comes to you.
Okay.
Mr. Wright.
Mr. Mayor, the redevelopment agency meeting was canceled last month, and we're looking for it this month because we will have Leewood Development Group, they're the ones that are building the townhouses that abut Neiman Williams Park and that extends out to Route 27. We'll find out exactly what they want to do as far as continuing building townhouses for sale. And they're doing that 160, 170, but it's not like they're building $200,000 townhouses. That's not the case. They're affordable townhouses. Also, we'll have RPM, our main developer, and with that, we're going to look at what is their next phase of redevelopment that they're going to do around the Boise area and the continuation of the interior of the redevelopment zone. So we'll have low-income housing, affordable housing. So people ask me, Carl, we need housing, housing, housing. Every time they say that, I say, well, RPM is building something, low-income housing, affordable housing, and market rate. And they ask me why they don't know about them, and I says, well, it's the same way that the people in East Orange find out about them, the same people in Norton find about them, Orange finds out about them, Irvington finds out about them. So somewhere along the line, they're doing something that you, as an individual, haven't done. So they're finding out about the apartments that RPM has for rent, and we at the redevelopment agency are doing our best. Ms. Francois also sits on the agency, and we're doing our best to make that known. On the Hamilton Street Business District, the meeting was canceled that month, last month, but we will be meeting this month. And there are a couple items on the table, including what phases of the redevelopment of Hamilton Street that we're looking at and what type of business that are coming into it. Because we all know that Hamilton Street was built to encourage people to come shop on Hamilton Street. The area needed uplifting, we're doing uplift. So if you want to, come on down to Hamilton Street. Sophie's Bistro would definitely love to see you. What else? Oh, did I mention Kimberly's Place? We had a, definitely a, it was a, I don't want to say a rededication, but it was an opportunity for us to celebrate the opening of Kimberly's Place. So when it goes down there, Ms. Francois will talk about it. Other than that, Ms., oh, one more thing. Juneteenth Committee, on June 17, 2023, at Neiman Williams Park, we will have a celebration of the Juneteenth program. Now, some people ask, well, Carl, what exactly is Juneteenth and why are we going to celebrate it? Well, technically, Juneteenth is when everyone, Texas and on over, everyone on the South, Southeast, were informed that they were free, that they were no longer in bondage, that they were no longer slaves. Now, the reason why it took so long is horse and pony, dogs, everybody, it was just a long time to get out that way. And as a result, they didn't know. Once they did know, they treated that day as sort of a birthday because it is that day that they realized that we're free. There's no more slaves in America. So we're going to celebrate that. The grand marshal this year would be Congresswoman, got tongue tied here, Congresswoman Bonnie Watson Coleman. We'll have more guest speakers. There'll be a parade that starts at Pine Grove Elementary School at 11 o'clock, proceeding to Neiman Williams Park. But now, from the school, we're going to go up to Hamilton Street. From Hamilton Street, we're going to go over to Neiman Williams Park. Floats, music, clouds, whatever we can get. It's going to be fun. If you want to come out, come out. Just come out and watch, or come out and be part of the parade, or come to the park and still be part of the parade. Games, food, you name it, potluck, psych, everything you want at the parade, you can have. So come on down, Juneteenth, we'll have fun. And I know the mayor is coming because he just loves a parade. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I also like party hats. Councilwoman Sheba Udine.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I wasn't here for the last meeting, so a few things to just talk about. First off, Happy Mother's Day and Happy Teachers' Day. We love our mothers and we love those teachers, so God bless those teachers. I was at the Governor's AAPI Heritage Month Celebration Event two weeks ago, very nice event, meeting a lot of, around the town elected officials and organizations with the governor. I also attended the Yount Ceremony, very nicely conducted. Always enjoy going out there. There was two sessions. The first session was just a ceremony, the second session was what I called a fun session, and I didn't want to miss out on it. I actually had my kids with me, and we wanted to go and check out what's happening at the Yount Center, and they had like a laser tag and a bunch of other basketball. I think there was a computer room, there was so much things going on, and everyone had a great time just being there. You could see the smiles, and I had a great time being there. So very nice event, Kimberly, to all the staff members, Wendy and the whole staff that worked on it. They did a phenomenal job. So thank you for having us and inviting us to be there. Apart from that, so on last Sunday, I had the First Eat Celebration happening in town, which was conducted, and I'm very thankful to our volunteers, which I will recognize in the next council, I plan to recognize in the next council meeting. We had a lot of local restaurant sponsors that came out, and what they did is pay it forward for our community. They served their food, and we had performances. It was just a very lovely event to showcase our diversity in town and represent our Muslim population. So very nice event that happened there. There was a resident that mentioned about the thin blue line in the street, and I had to double check because I was also wondering like what thin blue line that meant. And according to, and I know another resident corrected it, but according to the internet, the thin blue line embeds what was established to symbolize all law enforcement personnel, similar to the red cross symbol. So thank you. I wanted to double check as well, just to get an idea of what she was referring to. And, you know, these are things that, when you don't understand, come to us and let us clarify, and I'm glad that you guys are coming now and discussing this stuff. There was talks about, you know, trucks, regulation, I think, you know, some things that I do want to brainstorm with the council, is some kind of proactive plan ideas on what we can do to help come up with some solutions if we can. The other resident mentioned about ordinance and, you know, what the process and steps are. I'm always amazed when you guys come out and, you know, come and ask us these questions because I feel like sometimes we get so glued on terminology and what we do as a council. It's important that, you know, you guys are able to come and ask us these questions and let our staff members and our team answer those questions and get familiar with what's on the agenda and what you guys can discuss and just overall for familiarity reasons. So I think it's very nice to mention all this. Apart from that, I think that's pretty much all I had on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman James Vesanella.
Thank you. Yeah, so I know it was explained very well by our attorney, but just to reiterate maybe a couple of things. When an ordinance, even if your hearing is being talked about or we're working on one, get involved, bring ideas to the table. But if you see it on first reading, I think it was mentioned that that's when we can, you can talk about it at the public portion. And who knows, we've tweaked out or made minor changes, sometimes even substantial, based on things pointed out by the public, especially if it happens to be something they have a specialized interest or talent in. So there's that part of the process, which we really do invite public input. And I'm just wondering, not to make it too big of a deal, but to have a few paragraphs that explain in layman's terms, so to speak, the basic process that our attorney, again, outlined really well tonight, to have it on the internet, on our website, perhaps near, and it may already be there, I apologize if it is, but maybe near where our agenda and minutes and meetings and ordinances are posted. So it would just be, you know, another reference point for anybody not here tonight or not listening to me talking now. But it's always good that the public knows the basic process of how things get made law and can be involved in shaping, quite frankly, shaping that law. Anyway, there was stuff mentioned about the parking. I know that the manager specified, he probably knows best of any of us, but I don't believe you can park overnight on any township street, a truck where you can sleep in a type of thing. I may not have that right, but any of those ordinances with trucks, I'm sure we will have already been and will continue to revisit because the truck situation, separate from anything to do with warehouses, is not going anywhere except increasing in the numbers that seem to travel through our town on a regular basis, at least for the foreseeable future. So anything we could do, and I know people who drive trucks for a living, and I have nothing against trucks, help keep this economy flowing and do a lot more that we probably don't realize that we like and appreciate. But at the end of the day, we obviously need to consider making stricter anything that has to do with the quality issues, life issues that were brought up. But the manager is probably best to speak on that as far as the present ordinance or how our present ordinance is read. And the other issue, which sounded like he was going to speak about, was, there was an issue brought up about trees and Canal Walk and Shade Tree Commission, and I've been following the situation, I think that was referred to, and have some, let's just say, questions and concerns about what I see evolving with that. But since I don't know all the details, I'm not going to comment any further. Our manager will probably give some clarity on that, and I don't believe any absolute decisions have been made anyway. Separate from all that, Memorial Day is coming up, a few days from now, whatever you do, enjoy yourself. We have a wonderful parade, which is kind of our township parade. We have the Juneteenth Parade and other things that go on, but just ongoing Memorial Day has always been kind of our hometown parade of sorts. So come out or enjoy whatever you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Francois.
Yes, I must talk about the one-year anniversary of the youth center. I must talk about that. It is hard to believe that it's been a year already since we've been open. It was a really nice event. Our Congresswoman Bonnie Watson Coleman was there. She was at our grant opening ceremony as well and presented us with a million-dollar grant, community funding project grant. And she came back again this year for the grant opening. So we're like her golden child. She loves us and we love her. So we were so happy to have her there. A lot of people were taking pictures. One of the things we did this year is that we honored our sponsors, and we've had quite a few people that are reaching out to the youth center and sponsoring events and providing donations and funding to the youth center, which is a wonderful thing because that shows that people care about our children. So we honored our sponsors, the Lynx, the Men's Club of Canal Walk. Yes, 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 yes. They have adopted our children, and they come when we have our community engagement nights. The Glickle's family, Daniel Glickle's family, who was a big part of us opening the youth center, was here on the council at the time. And so we continue to honor his commitment and his legacy and his memory over at the youth center. His daughter was there as well. So we honored the Glickle family and the Canal's Walk Men's Club as one of our sponsors. The Franklin Food Bank, PNC Bank, and also the Lynx. Those were our honorees. And then also, we had a company called Rapid, Rapid RT, Rapid Response Team, yes, Rapid Response Team. They provided the food for the youth festival, and then we also had a restaurant called Mozzarella, who also provided the food for the public ceremony. So it was a well-attended event. It was very inspiring. Our youth were there, they did a lot of the presentations, and it just shows that the community is engaged and committed to investing in our youth and the future of our next generation. So it was a really, really nice event. And I'd like to thank the staff that did all that hard work to put all that together, Wendy and the team, the youth center personnel as well. They did a really nice job, and they were all there present to be a part of the celebration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Crystal Pruitt.
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended Kimberly Francois's soiree. No, I was able to attend the anniversary at the youth center. It has been touched on multiple times, so I'll leave it at great job. Unfortunately, our public safety meeting, we were not able to have it today, and I think we had a community foundation meeting, but I was unable to make that. I think many of us didn't make it. So I actually do not have too much to report out, just that as we are moving into the Memorial Day weekend, please be mindful and please be safe. And unfortunately, I will not be able to make it to this year's parade as I am taking a much-needed vacation. I will be out of the country. And with that, I will give it back to you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Honi Chaka.
Councilwoman, I really miss the vacation. I was out of town and I could not attend. I really miss it. They told me what actually happened over there. It was a good thing. They say congratulations for that. Another thing is that the Sierra Leonean community, they have an association they call 50 Years and Above. So this time around, they are having a function, Meadows, Meadow Bush Park, 421, the Mott Lane in Somerset, and they're inviting everybody, including the council members. Please let us try and attend that occasion for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman James, Councilman Potasnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, congratulations to everyone about the youth center, particularly Councilwoman Francois. I'm sorry I couldn't be there. I was on vacation. I went up to Cape Cod, did some whale watching, which was really cool, and the naturalists on board made mention that it really was a nat geo experience in four years. She had been doing that and never had witnessed a shark attack. Well, she called it a shark predation event because there were children, but a seal was just clobbered, and we were like right there. And we didn't actually get very good photos because it was quite humbling and terrifying at the same time to see nature at work. But if it weren't for that pre-scheduled vacation, I would have loved to celebrate the great success over the year and the future success that I wish everyone have because it's a critical piece that when children leave school, not just children in general, but I think we're trying to get the kids in that sort of interim time before their parents are home, the youth center plays a critical role, but much more beyond that. That was the initial, I think, vision, which has become a reality, but so many more opportunities for programming over the summer months and on the weekends as well. And then one reflection, I did appreciate the comments, I don't, I'm, she left already, about the thin blue line. You know, it's interesting symbols and sort of how society has gotten around, I don't know the right words to describe it, but sort of... There's a lot of debate right now about what beer to drink. Was there a gay pride flag on the thing? If it was, for some people, they won't touch it. For others, they're like, finally someone sees me, right? And I think when we look at symbols, just in general, they mean a lot of different people, different things to different people. And I think we, I would just want to say, can't we all get along? But we know that that's not happening too, and I think it's important for us to be sensitive. And I'm reminded of a conversation I had a couple of weeks ago with a staff member. I always put out the menorah around Christmas time. And when I was doing it as a school teacher, it was interesting when people would say like, Mr. Potasnik, you're Jewish? And I would never answer the question, because we don't talk about religion in school. So it really wasn't an issue for me. But I could also see how I was treated differently for having that symbol in my classroom. I also had a chemistry. It wasn't a religious symbol. It was chemistry, but I call it the chemist tree. And it had like beakers hanging on it and different things like that. So, you know, trying to be as inclusive as possible with other holidays. And that sticks with me, because to me, it was something that was welcoming. And to others, it was something that they felt a negativity towards and treated me in a more negative way. So I think it's important for us to raise our consciousness about what these symbols mean, why we're flying them, what we're trying to say by doing them, and also know how it might be landing on the other side of an unintended consequence, either purposefully, which in some cases people do. But I think oftentimes with something where there's not a lot of knowledge around, could be unintentional. And, you know, all of us to raise our awareness, so we can be a better neighbor and understand, are we trying really to say that to someone else? And how that lands and what that might be like to be in that community? And that is a challenge. And I think for, you know, every day that I'm trying to learn more and understand how the things I'm doing might land with someone else, whether they feel welcome or more welcome or less welcome. This is a good lesson to reflect on. And that's my comment for today.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Berison.
Thank you, Mayor. So the last couple of weeks, a lot of activities, but I'll just highlight a few things that are important, I think. One of them, I think many of you in the audience attended, is a planning board meeting. The last one, one major item that got approved is the 10-home subdivision approval on the Wilt Foundation campus right across here. That's going to also have a solar field in it as part of the subdivision. And the planning board did reluctantly approve that project because of its conforming application and it's within the guidelines and the statutes. That's the only thing that got discussed on that planning board meeting all the way to 10:00 PM. So the second item on the agenda, we couldn't even get to it. But anyway, another activity that I was responsible for, as part of the board member of the Greater Radisson Workforce Development Board, we had to pick a couple of vendors to serve the unemployed people of the county. It's a state organization, it's a federally funded state organization, that's the best way to put it. The one-stop operator and the one-stop career services, they serve the people of our county and Hunterdon County. Every three years, they have to be, they have to go through a public RFP process, and I was on the, one of the three to serve, to select the vendors for those two operations. So it's an important function that many people do not know what they do. Essentially, there's money available from the federal government to train the unemployed people, to support them in an alternate career or to increase their skills. And each county receives that fund and administers those operations and the funds. And this, but these two groups are responsible for that. And I'm happy to be part of that, because I have some experience in my previous career doing that kind of work. And then another, I thought, critical, important function that I fulfill is negotiating with the Sewerage Authority Union. So that couple of meetings that I met with the union leaders and the representatives of the Sewerage Authority employees, that negotiation has been going really well. And hopefully, we would have a new contract starting June for those employees. Small union, only 26 people, but nevertheless, we have to take care of those workers as well as we can, because the township manager will tell you that it's easy to retain an employee than hiring a new one, because we can't find enough good workers to be, to work for us, both here as well as at the Sewerage Authority. Anyway, there are a number of other events that we all attended. I don't want to talk about them. I did do, I did perform four weddings in the last two weeks, which is always a good thing. Happy to see people getting married and wanting to get married. I always ask them, are you sure this is your last chance? But I don't know where I, totally one gentleman came to me at the end of one wedding and said, hope to see you soon on my next wedding. Anyway, Eid, I think we, Councilwoman Dean, did a fantastic job organizing the event, thanks to our Box and Recreation Department, Boebertis especially. Fabulous gathering. You know, Eid, I learned that Eid means it's a festival, so you can always celebrate a festival. So there's no time for that, because one of the comments on the Facebook was Eid ended a few weeks ago, like the 30 days of Ramadan, you know, why are you celebrating it now? It's either too late or too early. I said, it's better late than never. So it's, there's no good time, there's no bad time to celebrate the different cultures of this township. And I also learned the Muslim god, Allah, is really, the meaning is God. It's not like a pronoun of the god name. So oftentimes, I come from a very large country with multiple religions, huge, huge population of Christians, Hindus, Muslims, Buddhists, Buddhists, Jains, Punjabi, Sikhs, many, many religions and many huge numbers. And then, you know, we were taught that, when I grew up, when I was growing up in school, that there's only one God universally, and there's really no difference between religions. So I believe there's only one race, which is human race, and there's only one God that we all believe in. Anyway, so nice job, Councilwoman. We will try to do these sort of diverse culture celebrations every year, multiple times, hopefully. And thank you for the support by the township and the council to organize these events. Talking about the different cultures, the Buddha Temple on Route 27 celebrated International Peace Day a week ago on Saturday. And they also celebrated Napal Day, because there are a lot of people from Napal at the temple. So it's a different, it's a different country, different culture. Again, another example of the diversity this town has and celebrates and recognizes. So thank you all for doing your part in that. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I do have to comment on the youth center anniversary. It was really a heartwarming event. It's nice to see the Congresswoman there and hear her speech. And what I pointed out was, is that we don't know how many lives the youth center has saved already, but I know that there will be hundreds of lives that we'll save in the future. Number one risk factor for a child to be involved with drugs is the amount of time they spend unsupervised between school and when their parents come home. This, one of the many things it does is fill that gap. So the fact that someone's at the youth center rather than sitting on a corner, getting involved with someone who comes by, it just, it can save a life. And we'll never know it, we'll never be able to, we'll never quite feel it, but it will happen and it will continue to happen. And it's a great thing that it's there and your efforts are already paying off and we don't know how. Memorial Day Parade was mentioned. There will be a Coast Guard helicopter flyover, as long as they don't, aren't called away for another emergency. And anyone who has an antique car can contact me and I can get you in touch with Mr. La Court, who can get you into the parade, but they're looking for more antique cars. There's my number, my email address is on the website. And as long as I'm talking about that, when it comes to when you can get involved with an ordinance, there's my number, my email address is on the website. I'm really anxious to hear from anyone about an ordinance that they want, that we have, that they don't want. You can be involved at any time. Tonight, you could have spoken about the ordinance that we're going to introduce tonight during the general public session. You can do that next meeting as well, though we like to keep the specifics discussions for second reading to the second reading. But during that first public session, you can speak about anything related to government. So you could speak about how you don't like the government of some country. It doesn't have to be about a Franklin-specific issue. Let's see. So I had the opportunity to talk to a number of people about the B9 Schoolhouse project. I'm not going to discuss the merits of the project itself, but there were a lot of misunderstandings. So I consulted the staff to go to the source documents and find things out. And I learned some things and I had some misconceptions too. So let me tell you what I learned. So who owns the B9 Schoolhouse warehouse property? B9 Schoolhouse LLC owns it. They bought it on 9/30/21 and 9/28/21. There's four pieces of property there and they split them up over two days that they purchased it. It cost $28,830. How the $8,300 got added into 28 million, I'm not sure. The total acreage was 26 and a half acres, though they're only building on just over 20 acres. So Mr. Vornlocker has put up a map about the zoning, as to when it was zoned to allow warehouses. And this is where I learned some things I didn't know. In 1989, oh, you changed it on me.
No, that's the 1989 map.
That's the 1989 map. So if you could point out Metler Lane.
Can I point out? It is a PDF. I don't have a pointer, Mr. Mayor.
You have, you have a mouse.
I do, but when you point, when you use a mouse, it just gives you a little crosshairs, not a pointer. It goes from the bottom-left corner of the picture and goes up on an angle towards the...
Very good. And point out, screw it, don't put some sit down.
Schoolhouse runs between the two ROLOs.
Right. So that was for orientation. So you could see back in 89, the part of Canal Walk was ROLO and part of Canal Walk was agriculture. And all of the other side of Metler Road, immediately adjacent, was ROLO. And M1 was kind of set back. The Eastman property, which I like to call it, that's the, those three houses at the, well...
It's the L of ROLO in the lower part of the page.
Right. That big piece of property there.
No, it is the top of the L in the ROLO.
Yes, that big property, not those little properties, just below that, Mr. Wright. That was ROLO at the time. And then the Summerfields property, which is the other side of Schoolhouse, was ROLO at the time. So then go to the next map. Do you have the 97 map? So in, on September 23rd, 1997, Canal Walk property was rezoned to SCV. So that's right there, that SCV area, that's Canal Walk.
Trying to zoom in for you.
So that's Canal Walk is the SCV property. You still have the ROLO and RR3 was introduced for the Eastman property.
Well, there was more than that. There was three changes that took place at...
I'm getting there, Mr. Vornlocker. So B9 property was rezoned to M1 on, so I'm sorry, on September 23rd, 1997, Canal Walk was made SCV. Three weeks later, on October 14th, 1997, B9 was rezoned to M1. Lot 60 was split. Lot 60 is, the southern part of Lot 60 is the field that is just south of the pond. The northern part of Lot 60 is the area just north of the pond. So they, right where the RR3 and ROLO are there, that's when Lot 60 was split. The lots still stayed the lot, but its zoning was split between the two. So that was three weeks after Canal Walk's zoning was created. The Eastman property was rezoned to RR3 and Summerfields was rezoned to M1.
It's actually the split between the M1 and the RR3, not the ROLO and the RR3. You had said that, and that's...
You're right. Thank you. Then in, on September 25th, 2001, the Eastman property was rezoned ROLO. So Eastman property went from RR3, went from, Eastman property went from ROLO to RR3, back to ROLO. ROLO is research, office, and lab. RR3 are three-acre rural lots. Summerfields property was rezoned on 62404 to be the planned adult community PAC. So it's similar to the SCV zone, except it, well, it's very similar to the SCV zone. Later on, Summerfields was allowed to have children, so it was no longer an adult community. Then in 2020, on December 8th, the M1, M2, and CB zones were merged into the BI zone. But it was not until well after the B9 property was already zoned M1, that we made it to the BI zone. So it was back in 97, three weeks after Canal Walk was created, that the B9 Schoolhouse property was allowed to have a warehouse. And there's many people I talked to who didn't, didn't understand that. They were told and they believed that it was on December 2020 that it was rezoned to allow for warehouses. But that was actually done just three weeks after the zoning was created for Canal Walk. And then on... And then on this body, on, I'm sorry, July 29th, 2022, rezoned the Eastman property back to RR3. So the Eastman property has gone from ROL to RO3 to ROL to RO3. Try one second. The last thing is, people thought that because of the changes we made on the, changing from M1 to BI, allowed for a different project for Schoolhouse, for the Schoolhouse, B-9 Schoolhouse to, sorry. People thought that the BI, changing to the BI zone from an M1 zone has created a different prop, different building on Schoolhouse B-9. Having trouble saying this.
So the building that is proposed to be built at Schoolhouse and Metlers would have been different had the zoning not changed from M1 to BI?
Thank you. That, that is, that is what has been proposed by some people. But in short, and this is according to Mr. Healy, the only change was that the east side setback is 34 feet. That's the side that is next to 70 Schoolhouse Road, another warehouse. So this is putting it six feet closer than it could have been because of the change from M1 to BI to the Schoolhouse, 70 Schoolhouse property. So moving it a little farther away from Canal Walk. That's the only change that was, that was made in the, what could be built on, or what the B-9 Schoolhouse warehouse has taken advantage of. And he went through step by step, and I'm not going to go through all of them, of what these changes are. Most, most things did not change. The height of the building, the current height of the building would have been permitted before the 2020 zoning change. The size of the building was unchanged, the floor area was unchanged, and the setbacks were unchanged, except that we're now using the scenic corridor setback, which is 100 feet, which is still the, which, which is unchanged again because the scenic corridor was always there. So there's nothing about the B-9 Schoolhouse warehouse that is different because of the 2020 zoning change, other than it is six feet closer to the warehouse on the other side of, of the, of the other side of the property from Canal Walk. Some of that's a little complicated, but in short, those are the, the facts that the B-9 Schoolhouse property is already owned by B-9 Schoolhouse LLC, that the zoning changes were not, the zoning change that allowed for the warehouse was not the December 20th decision. And the December 20th decision did not make, cause the warehouse to be much, to be any different than it is now, except that it's six feet farther away than it would have That is what I have. Mr. Vornlocker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report tonight. Oh, you want me to say something now? Okay. No, I, so one, I did allude to it. And Jan, the reason why I didn't answer you on Friday was because my daughter-in-law was giving birth Friday morning. So I did have a grandchildren. That wasn't just a... Thank you. Looking for cheap applause. As far as the shade tree question that came up, the shade tree commission, we have a shade tree commission and the shade tree trust that is created as a part of that same ordinance is based on a New Jersey state statute 40:64, if you want to look it up. And shade tree trust funds can only be used to plant trees on public property. So if there was something, and I have not been privy to all of this because I, I don't sometimes try not to get, you know, caught in the weeds here. I know that there have been discussions about trees and trees being planted on the Canal Walk side of Metlers Road. Well, there certainly is a public right of way on the Canal Walk side, so I don't know if that's what the proposal is. But shade tree trust money must be used to plant trees on public property. Okay? So that's one thing. I didn't beat you up too bad, did I? There you go. As far as parking and idling, so I want to just clarify something, that I know that we went down a road earlier with some comments. The anti-idling is a law, not an ordinance. It is something that is the state of New Jersey's law, not the Township of Franklin's ordinance. The law, as it is written, allows for people who are occupying trucks with sleeper cabs, and remember that these men and women, this is their livelihood, that's where they live. And when it's very cold outside or when it's very hot outside, they are allowed to have those engines run if they are post-2007, which have much more significant emissions controls on them than those that did before 2007, when the EPA changed the laws regarding diesel engines. So they are allowed to stay cool in the summer and warm in the winter, and that's why they are allowed to idle, because that's where their home is. Okay? So I'll say that. As far as parking on public streets, the ordinance that is currently in place in Franklin Township prohibits the parking of that type of vehicle on a public roadway between midnight and 6:00 AM. Thus, the sign on Jensen Drive and other places in the township where that was a problem. At one time, that was not the case. At one time, the ordinance only restricted parking of commercial vehicles of that nature in residential zones. That ordinance was amended probably about 15 years ago to include all roads, not just residential zones. So it does include those roads. So that truck, whether it's legitimate or not, as far as its idling is concerned, it's not supposed to be parked on a public street after midnight. So if they go into those parking lots, to be quite, to be quite honest, Jan, that's, they're, they're going to go somewhere because they need to be somewhere. New Jersey is, is a state that seriously lacks truck stops and parking areas for these trucks to park. All right? All you need to do is drive down the New Jersey Turnpike and through the Turnpike rest areas after, you know, and at certain times of the evening, drive down Route 78 and 100 into Warren County and look at the trucks that are parked when the truck stops overflow and park along the shoulders and, because there's no place else for them to go. And the federal government is very strict about the number of hours that they can operate within a 24-hour period. They must have rest time. If they don't and their E-logs show that they haven't taken the requisite rest time, they lose their livelihood because they lose their commercial driver's license. So they need to park somewhere, and that's what, then that's what they do. So, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, that's what's going on. That's why the law is crafted in the way that it is as far as the anti-idling law is concerned. So, so that, that's, that's an issue that I know that you're working with the Public Safety Director on. They're working with the DEP because there are other factors involved here. There's, there's onboard power units that can, some trucks have that don't mean that they don't need to run the main engine, they run an auxiliary unit to power the air conditioning and heating. All of that is, will be training that the DEP is going to provide to the police department, who's the enforcement agency here locally. Just, you know, they're not the primary enforcement agency of the anti-idling laws locally. It's the county health department that's actually the primary enforcement agency. That, I think I'll cover that. So my frustration, my frustration was not the same as your frustration. My frustration is this. I spent 27 years as a police officer, and I told people over and over and over again, one of the most frustrating things for a police officer to hear is they have better things to do. No, they don't. If someone is breaking the law, that is the police department's responsibility. They don't have better things to do. The truth is, you raise an issue where there's a pattern of violations occurring. If the police department isn't notified when those violations are occurring, they can't develop an enforcement strategy to deal with it. So you need to call when you see the truck, whether they catch them or not, they need to be aware of it. The Traffic Safety Bureau monitors those calls, and an event is created in the computer as to what the violation was, and they go and they look at those things and they say, okay, these calls are coming in between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. That's when we need to go out and do our enforcement on Schoolhouse Road. Without that data, and that data comes from people like you calling, they're not going to be able to do that efficiently. You need to call. You're not bothering them, that's their job. All right. Command post. This is Lawson. The $500,000 that was received recent, I guess I announced it, or one of us announced it at the last council meeting, that money was part of a state grant. The funding was actually provided for in last year's budget to replace the, the command post. And at that time, we had also made an application for a grant, so therefore we held off and now we've gotten the grant, so that's what will be applied to purchase it. The original command post that the mayor kind of jokingly alluded to was actually, it was a 1982 school bus. I had the opportunity to drive it on a number of occasions. The 1982 school bus was donated to the Township Police Department, actually by the Bridgewater Police Department, back in the late 80s, late 89, right around there, 1990. It was outfitted by two officers, Jim Burke and Ken Otrinsky, who had some carpentry skills, and they built some things inside that old school bus. And we had it painted by the Public Works Department in stripes on it, and it ran probably, it ran well for probably about 10 or 15 years, and then it didn't run so well for the rest of its life. I believe that we tried to auction it off and there were no bidders. It was a gasoline engine, so the gasoline engine would have really no value compared to a diesel engine that, that might have had some value for scrap. I think it actually went to Somerset Recycling and was scrapped. So this replacement, that's now in great part being funded by a state grant, I had a communication with, with our state legislature's office today about getting the instruction for the police department to, to complete the paperwork necessary to receive the funds. And all of the preliminary work had already been done because it was a capital project last year. So the quotes and what have you have already been done. So hopefully that answers that question. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about the thin blue line. I, I'm not going to talk a great deal. I think that, that Councilmember Pataznik was very eloquent in the way that he explained how symbols are twisted. The thin blue line is actually, it goes back, really back to the 1800s with, and I won't go to, with the Crimean War. I won't even talk to you about how it relates to that. But really, it started with the Los Angeles Police Department in 1950, and, and it was to represent the line between good and evil. And the police officers, in a very honorable way, stand between the harm that can be done by evil people to good people. And that's really the, where the, the thin blue line came from. Like many symbols, as the council member said, symbols can be twisted by those who are not good people. Now, the swastika is a, is a twisted symbol of, of a Christian symbol from Ireland in the, in the time of the Celts and the conversion of the pagans to Christianity in Ireland. And so it's how you can take something that, that's pure and good and twist it to make it something evil, and I understand that. I, I don't know what this person's reason, but I can tell you that generally contractors who do paving work have a close relationship with police departments who provide their protection, and I'm quite certain that that man has that on his truck because he works with police officers, and it's a symbol of good as far as police officers are concerned. Unfortunately, and now, I will tell you that Mrs. Lawson's husband and I graduated from the police academy together, and, and it was always intended to be a good thing. Unfortunately, bad people made it something bad, and that's unfortunate. And I, I won't apologize for being a police officer. I don't think I should have to. And I don't think I should have to apologize for people supporting police, but unfortunately, like I said, bad people use good things for bad purposes sometimes. I think that's the case and why it has gotten a negative connotation. I think that's all I have for you tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There was one other thing about the woman who was frustrated. The, we're putting in a network of cameras, and with that, we'll be able to pick out patterns ourselves. You can't give someone a ticket from a camera. That, that was, I won't go into the details of that. The state won't let us do that. But with a network of cameras, we could see these trucks are driving here, where they, where do they wind up? And we can talk to that warehouse and say, you know, stop this, we don't want you doing that. You know, we'd rather get people to comply rather than have to enforce and punish. But it will tell us a pattern if we need to put police out there. So that, that, that was something that was, that actually I came up with, well, I began it by saying, why don't we make B-9 Schoolhouse put up a camera? And Mr. Vornlocker said wisely, well, why don't we put up a network of cameras ourselves? So together we make half a brain. So, okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, I just want to clarify something. When we were talking about how ordinances started, I, I wanted to be clear, Mr. Vornlocker and I worked on an ordinance that was actually your idea, which is the noise ordinance, why we were the, you know, the scrivners of that. Obviously, that was an idea that generated from, from the mayor's research with regards to ordinances in other towns on, on the operation. So I just want to kind of give credit where credit is due.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, let me find our place. Yes, and now the meeting begins. Township manager's report we have done, that was item number nine. Item number 10 is approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to Township Council for their approval. Council work session, regular meeting, and executive session minutes of May 9th, 2023.
I move the minutes from May 9th, 2023.
We have a second discussion, correction. Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Pataznik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Councilman Vasanova.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Item number 11, time to pay the bills. The warrants in the amount of $13,379,770.42 on May 23rd, 2023 is presented to Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Pataznik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanova.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Item number 12, public hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading. Want to explain that second reading thing? Ordinance 4409-23, the bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements and equipment acquisitions by and in the Township of Franklin and the County of Somerset, State of New Jersey appropriating $5,273, $73,500 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5,325 in bonds or notes of the Township of Franklin to finance part of the cost thereof. Is presented for public hearing and final adoption. A public hearing has been noticed is required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any dis, I'm sorry, moved and seconded... Any, I'm sorry, moved and seconded. All in favor of opening public discussion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. We're open for public discussion on this item only.
Now, seeing no one come forward, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion to adopt. Public session is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? What we're going through is we pass the budget. And we're going to go through a number of bonds that come when we pass the budget to be able to spend the money that we've just passed. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance number 4410-23, bond ordinance providing for the 2023 road improvement by and in the township of Franklin in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey, appropriating $5,560,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5,282.500 of the township to finance part of the cost thereof is presented for a public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. We have a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on this item only.
Seeing no one coming forward, mayor, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka. Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance number 4411-23, bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements for the water utility by and in the township of Franklin in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey. The township appropriating $6,225,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $6,224 bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public on this item only.
Seeing no one, I move we close public comment on this item.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin. Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance 4412-23, capital ordinance appropriating $2,750,000 from the Open Space Trust Fund to pay for various capital acquisitions and improvements for the township of Franklin in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on this item only.
Alex Strauss, 285 Haslett Way, $2.75 million and no acquisition at all of any new open space. Now, yeah, it's fine. Everyone has their projects. But the Open Space Fund was originally created, of course, to acquire open space. If you were to ask the public, the citizens of Franklin, I think they'd be surprised to know that not one acre, not one iota this year is being used to acquire any open space. I know you're going to say, well, there's a lot of open space already acquired. That's true, okay? But meanwhile, in this climate, behind ShopRite, clear cutting for a warehouse. And it's not just warehouses. Go down Cedar Grove, you see it, the condo development, clear cutting there. You know, in this, okay. Deputy Mayor Barrison alluded to the planning board meeting. I was there last week. And what happened at the end? Well, Chairman Orsini was very eloquent. He said, well, you guys, you know, it has to be open space, really. You know, if you want to take this property out of commission, it's up to open space. Now, that doesn't mean the property owner would agree, of course, to having the property to be purchased. But we're not making any progress here. So maybe Ward Two would be the place to purchase some open space after everything that's happened recently. So it's not good. We need to acquire more open space. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Seeing no one, oh, seeing someone coming forward, mayor.
Hi, Kiki Anastasikasal, would be brief. I live in Canal Walk 3204, Enclave Circle. I want to add to a few thoughts to the comments that the previous presenter made. I was at the same planning board meeting. And as the deputy mayor mentioned, the planning board reluctantly voted to approve the construction, excuse me, of 10 homes and a solar farm, so to speak, depleting this township of, if I'm correct, seven acres of wooded area. Many of the residents were there saying that the property near their homes and this particular property where the Will Foundation is going to build these structures frequently floods. And I understand the needs of the township to buy certain things that are needed. And therefore, the bond, even though bonds make me nervous because it's borrowing and the township has to pay interest. But the argument here is, are we, are we making, the question rather here is, are we making Franklin Township climate resilient? This particular property where the Will Foundation is going to build these homes is, seemed clearly to be a very fragile property from an environmental and climate change perspective, okay? And I am concerned that we are not, I know we buy enough or sufficient open space. But I'm wondering whether a study can be undertaken where the township identifies fragile, environmentally fragile areas and uses open space funds to purchase those areas rather than waiting for the residents to come to the township and request that you purchase a particular property. I think the township owes it to us, the taxpayers, to conduct a climate change study. And if you've already taken the steps to do that, I just don't know. But all I'm reading is flooding all across the country and township's been unprepared. I'm sure you remember Hurricane Katrina. And I would hate that the next major hurricane hitting New Jersey because we have had two, right? Sandy and Ida, just in the last few years, catches us unprepared. So I would just like to throw that out as an idea, okay? Using funds from the Open Space Fund to identify properties in the township that appear to be fragile and prone to extreme flooding. Thank you so much.
Jan Bryant, 22 Bryant Court. And speaking about open space, when you spoke about the benign properties, and thank you for that description. And Mark Keely was very good at explaining that all to me. So I understood that very clearly. One of the things about those properties that you were talking about, the split zone, lot 6D, it's residential. This is about open space. Okay, well, I was just going to make, can I make a recommendation about what would be a great area for open space?
Only about this one.
Okay, all righty. Thank you, sorry. Okay, all right, yeah, okay, thank you, sorry.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor, seeing no one else, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Seconded.
Bless you.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. Vornlocker.
So I would just like to address one particular thing that was just stated. And that was that this was debt incurred. This is a capital ordinance. This is cash. There is no debt involved in this. This is not a bond ordinance. The other three were. And this $2.75 million is used to maintain all of the open space properties that we already have. This is, and while there's no particular item identified in here for acquisition, that's not how we would acquire property. The way we would acquire property is a separate capital ordinance after negotiating for that property. And those negotiations are held privately, not publicly, so that we negotiate the best price and don't disclose to a potential competitor for the property what we're negotiating for. But we're currently in negotiations for two properties. But, so the $2.75 million is only a portion of the annual open space tax collected. It's that portion that we utilize to maintain our properties and purchase the equipment to maintain our properties. So that's, and that ordinance that created the Open Space Trust was done by referendum to include all of those things, including a recreational component to build parks, which is what that money is also used for, as well as the acquisition of property. So that's something that, while we might be in negotiations right now for two additional properties to be acquired, I'm not going to tell you where they are. I'm not going to tell you how much we're looking to buy them for. I'm not going to tell you anything about it. That's why when you see an agenda item for executive session that says possible land acquisition, then I can talk to my bosses about it in that room and not out here. So that's one of my job responsibilities, is to negotiate for the acquisition of property. And so that's what, this ordinance is not for that purpose. Someday in the future, you may see an ordinance that says we're buying a piece of property. That'll have a separate ordinance. Okay?
Yes, and also, the Open Space Committee, one of their tasks is to look around the town and look which, what lots of open space are appropriate for acquisition. So we do, I don't think they look at it from a global warming point of view. They look at it from what property can we preserve?
Actually, that's being done now.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's it. Right now is the 10-year mark for our open space plan. And part of what the Open Space Advisory Committee is beginning to do right now is gather all that information. And they make the recommendations on which lands to pursue. And it's a lot of factors, including some of those that were mentioned today.
So the last thing is the open space budget. The term budget is a loose term. And Mr. Vornlocker has spoken about this many times. It's not like the township budget where you basically have to say, this is what we're going to do. It's more flexible, that we can spend money on land at any time as long as we have it and we have, we do have a reserve. So we just, it is, you won't see land acquisition in the budget.
Right.
And in, not the last five years. Over the last six years, skipping this last year, because we haven't calculated that yet, we spent $21 million to buy 540.
540 acres.
Yeah. So we are actively doing that all the time. Thank you. So, oh, we have to move the item. Motion to adopt.
Motion.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka. Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
So ordinance on introduction on first reading, item number 13A, ordinance 4113-23, ordinance number 41-23, and ordinance amending the code of the township of Franklin in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey, more precisely, chapter 167, noise section 167-6, restricted use and activities, adding new subsections B7 and B8. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting in publications according with law and public hearing and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, June 13, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the Township Chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
There's just one part of this I don't understand.
What's that?
It says, this code enters immediately adjacent to or across a public roadway from a developed residential property in a residential. This is what I'm questioning. Between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. following day on weekdays. And between the hours of 8:00 p.m. following day on weekends.
That's how, that's how the wording always is. From 10:00 p.m. on one day to 7:00 a.m. the following day. So 10 o'clock at night to 7 o'clock in the morning the following day. And then likewise, from whatever the weekend hours are. You just said it, but I don't remember.
8:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m.
Yeah, from 8:00 p.m. on. So if it was 8:00 p.m. tonight till 8 o'clock tomorrow morning. So that's on, that's how all of our ordinances are worded for hours that go from one day to the next after midnight. It's just going from today to tomorrow in the morning.
And it's.
Monday or 7:00 on Monday through Friday. Right.
All right, so this is limiting operations of properties that are on the scenic corridor that are non-residential but are adjacent to or across the street from properties that are residentially zoned that have been developed.
Correct.
So that, it's limiting the hours of operations of those businesses. And actually, Councilwoman Francois read the important thing that I want to caution you about is today, the words were added or and across the street. I forget the exact wording. Across the public.
Public street.
Across the public roadway. So I wanted council members who may have read it last night to realize that this, there was a minor change to that. In English, adjacent would conclude across the street. But we just wanted that to not be a point of question. Any other discussion?
And I forgot to mention, and also it says, or federal holidays.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance number 4414-23, and ordinance accepting, thank you. An ordinance accepting a conservation easement from Franklin Storage LLC for premises known as Block 502.01, Lot 45.02, also known as Davidson Avenue, and a deed of the dedication of the right of way for premises known as Block 502.01, Lots 45.01 and 46.01, also known as Davidson Avenue. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting publication in accordance with law, and public hearing and final adoption at the meeting of Township Council to be held on Tuesday, June 13, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the Township Council Chambers. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Consent agenda, the items A through Y, as listed on the consent agenda, a portion of this meeting are presented to Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Petosnick.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.